Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law found in Mass General Law is chapter 30, A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting in the Southborough School Committee will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the URL listed in the posting. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch the meeting may do so in the following manner: SAM Government Channel, Verizon Channel 37, or Charter Channel 192. No in-person attendance of the members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the district website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. With that said, I'd like to call to order the Southborough School Committee open meeting. The date is Wednesday, June 9, 2021. Time is 6:36 PM, and all committee members are in attendance. The first item on the agenda is audience sharing. I need to look over attendees. I see a number of attendees. I do not see any hands up. Does anyone wish to share? We have another audience sharing at the end of the meeting. Seeing none, I will move to new business.
So Roger, I think we skipped.
That's true. I'm sorry. I missed the recognition line, didn't I?
So.
Yeah, that's not on the... Yes, I'm so sorry. So the first item, before we even move to new business, is recognition of retirees. And Greg?
Sure. So thank you. And I will ask Stephanie to promote our retirees as panels. And I'll just give a minute for everyone to connect.
Given that there are three Suzanne Hughes, I'm not sure which one's the real Sue.
The real Suzanne Hughes could raise her hand. I know she was inviting a few guests to listen in.
And I, I, oh, I think I... All right, so I'm going to promote the real Sue. And then I'm gonna see if that worked. Let's see if I missed anybody. I think that's everyone who's here.
Okay, so, so good evening. And first of all, on behalf of the public schools of Northborough and Southborough School Committee and the leadership team, I just want to welcome our class of 2021 retirees. Combined, we have educational staff as retiring that has over 134 years of experience combined, so quite an experienced group that we're losing. And the commitment and dedication that the retirement staff provided over the years has been immeasurable. And every role, every person who is part of our organization has made a difference. So this evening, I'd like to say a few words about each of the retirees to support their recognition and their hard work. So first, we have Diane Jordan. So Diane Jordan is retiring as a speech and language therapist from the Woodward School. Her years of service are from 2004 to 2021. So Diane is a graduate of State University of New York. She has a bachelor's degree in speech and hearing, and she has a master's in speech pathology. Prior to arriving in Southborough, she had a private practice. She had done some work in the Watches at Regional School District as a speech and language pathologist, and brought to us 19 years of experience before arriving. Her colleagues and principal spoke about her integrity, honest, fairness, and trustworthiness. And she is viewed as an expert in her field. And lastly, she is truly student-centered and will leave behind very difficult truths to fill. So congratulations, Diane.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next, we have Gretchen Hiddam. She's retiring as an adjustment counselor from the Trotter Middle School. Her years of service are from 2009 to 2021. I'm not sure if everyone knows, but she has an economics degree from Bates, an MBA from Boston College, and a master's from Leslie University in Clinical and Mental Path. Her colleagues describe her as calm, cool, and collected. And if there's a crisis, she's the type of person you want around. She has an incredible high level of professionalism and strong commitment to her students. She deeply understands early adolescents and has been involved in all aspects of Trotter culture over the years. And it was mentioned several times that she chaperoned the Washington DC trip. So I know that was greatly appreciated. And lastly, she's been an outstanding advocate and partner with our families and her colleagues. So Gretchen, congratulations, and you'll be sorority miss.
Thanks, Greg.
Next, we have Suzanne Hughes. So Suzanne is retiring as a kindergarten teacher from the Finn School. She has worked in our district from 1996 to 2020. Suzanne is a graduate of Benton College Business Management and Boston University in Early Education. She also worked at Procter &amp; Z, and she brought eight years of experience before joining the Finn School. For anyone who has worked with Sue, you know she is positive, energetic, student-centered, and very passionate about what she does. She always takes a developmental approach and thinks about what's best for kids. And she, too, has been a strong partnership with families. She has been a true trusted and established educator. She's been a curriculum leader, a crisis team member, and a team leader. And again, will be impossible to replace Sue Hughes, but congratulations, Sue.
Thank you, Greg.
So next, our next retiree for the class of 2021 is Sandy Scardotto. Is retiring as a technology teacher from the Trotter Middle School. Her years of service are from 2000 to 2021, and during that time, she's worn many hats. She is a graduate of Boston College in Business Management. And there was a theme of people's educational experience, so it was interesting to see this retiring class. She also has a degree from Leslie University in Education. She's been a team leader. She has taught ELA at Trotter for many years. And most recently, she's been instructional technologist specialist, has made a great difference in terms of use of technology at Trotter School. She's been a mentor coordinator, a scheduling extraordinaire. She has been nurturing and supportive, and she brings so much to the climate and culture of Trotter School. She's considered to be a go-to person. She loves to learn and just has an amazing attitude. And congratulations, Sandy. So next, and I don't believe Joan Tetra is joining us this evening, but I'm going to speak about her anyway. So Joan Tetra is retiring as a tutor from the Trotter Middle School. Her years of service are from 2007 to 2020. She is a graduate of Siena College in Political Science, SUNY graduate as well in Social Work, and Simmons College in Special Education, Moderate Needs. She came to our district with experience from Medway, Needham, Bellingham, and Franklin. And she served as a special education teacher at Trotter. She's taught co-talectives at Trotter. She's been a great advocate for students. She's considered a great colleague, and she's known for having high expectations in a very supportive environment. So again, I want to wish Joan Tetra congratulations. So next is Ann Thurber. So Ann Thurber is retiring as a special education teacher from Finn School. Her years of service are from 2004 to 2021. She's a graduate of King State and Leslie University and brought to our district 12 years of teaching experience. She served as a classroom teacher and a special education teacher. And she has always approached her work with a strength-based mindset, building upon students' strengths. She helped with NAYC accreditation, and she is known for great connections with students, a great colleague. She is truly valued and respected and is considered a person of honesty and integrity. So I'd like to congratulate Ann Thurber in her retirement. So moving on, we have educational support professional retiring this year. We have Deborah George. She's retiring from Trotter Middle School, and her years of service are from 2008 to 2021. And she is a graduate of Central Michigan State. And this is a very interesting fact, so I might be calling Deborah. She has a degree in business with a focus on interior design. So she's a volunteer substitute and worked in three schools, and as a facilities planner, prior to joining Trotter. She's always brought to Trotter strong teaching practices, very supportive with her students. And her passion and commitment to her work have always been evident to those around her, and she, too, has made great connections to students. So congratulations.
Thank you, Greg.
So next, we have two folks who work in the cafeteria. So Kathy Paul is a retiring cook from the Trotter American School. Her years of service are from 2013 to 2021. So prior to coming to Trotter, she worked at Radiologic for 10 years, and she was a horticulturist for 10 years. She's been a strong leader of the cafeteria team. She's always focused on student nutrition, and she is described as trustworthy, caring, and really truly enjoyed working with students, and always took a student-first approach. And want to wish Kathy Paul well in her retirement. Next, we have Carol Nocera. She is also retiring as a manager from the Neary School. Her years of service are 2012 and 2021. Prior to joining Neary School, she worked at the Department of Revenue. So I thought that was kind of an interesting, interesting experience and background to bring to our district. She's a parent of four children, and she, she has some experience. So all of you new retirees might want to reach out to her. She is semi-retired in 2009. So if you need some guidance, she might be available to give you some, some key tips. She's described as truthful, responsible, personable, and trustworthy, calm and steady, and friendly to her students. And lastly, we have one more person to acknowledge, and that is Keith Campbell. Keith Campbell is retiring as a custodian at Trotter Middle School, and he's been at Trotter since 1998. He's described as responsible. He's always very helpful. He's an extremely hard worker. He's also worked in Peaslee, in Northborough, and he's worked at Finn and Woodward, and he'll be missed at Trotter School. So again, on behalf of the school committee and the district and all of my colleagues and your colleagues, congratulations. And this is an outstanding retiring class of 2021. And what a year to retire. So thank you for everything you've done this year in sticking it out through the pandemic. So thank you.
If I could, I'd also like to add to all the retirees, my and our congratulations, and thank you for a job well done for the Southborough Schools and for the Southborough Schools community. Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to say, I know it was time for me to go when Roger Challen was on school committee, and I had his son when he was in second grade. So I now know it is definitely time for me to go. Please tell Nick I said hello.
I will. I will.
Must be a nice, fine young man right about now. Lots of children and off and running.
Yeah, I actually saw him last week. He was still in the military down in Fort Bragg. So I'll mention, I will mention it to him.
Yeah. Again, it was a pleasure when I had him in second grade.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again, everybody, for my time at Southfar. I appreciate it.
So as a small token of our appreciation, we do have a small gift waiting, and the principal of office is tomorrow. So typically, we would have this type of event in person, but again, like everything else, we've, we've had to pivot. But again, we have a small, small token of our appreciation in the offices. And again, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
All right. Well, that was very nice. Next, we've got new business. And first item in new business is legislative update. Craig?
Sure. So just two quick updates. So again, the state budget process is moving forward. House and Senate are now convening a conference committee. And again, it's projected that the FY22 state budget will be finalized early this fall. So although it doesn't, I think our Becky's projections in terms of the circuit breaker and Chapter 70 were spot on, we're still monitoring it very closely. So that's the first update. The second update really is around the Fall Conference, the Fall MASC, Amassed Joint Conference. Cheryl did send out information about the conference that is being held on November 3 through the 6. It's really an outstanding conference, and if you can attend for a day or two days, it's really worth the time to connect with other school committee members and also to participate in some of the sessions. There is a early registration. So if you register early, and I believe it's in the email Cheryl sent, there is a discount. It's $345 before July 15, and $495 after July 15. So it might be too early for some of you to decide if you're able to attend, but if you know you are, you save the district $100. And that is the legislative update for this evening.
All right. Would you mind doing a brief town meeting recap?
Sure. So first of all, I want to thank the members who were able to attend the town meeting. From my perspective, that was uneventful, which is a positive. And I just want to take a minute and thank Rebecca Palgrino, directors and principals for their work in the development of the FY22 town-approved budget. Rebecca and her team have done an excellent job throughout the year, and really, I commend them for staying with it in a very difficult time. And I also want to thank the school committee for its support. And most importantly, I just want to thank the town citizens for supporting FY22 South brook school budget. And I believe it's, you know, fiscally and educationally sound, and it helps us move our, our programs forward. And so on, always a successful budget year.
I'd also like to add thanks to Becky and the principals. These are very large budgets, a substantial portion of, of the town budget, as we all know. And I remember back when there was always a lot of concern and questions about these budgets a number of years ago. And I think the fact that there isn't, I think it's a, it's a testimony to how accurately they're, they're created and how well-thought-out they are before we actually ever get to the point of town meeting. So I, I think the folks that, that work on these deserve a lot of thanks and appreciation. Hey, I'm muted. I'll unmute myself now. So third item is the reappointment of William Warren to the Municipal Technology Committee. The school committee has some appointments to this committee. Mr. Warren has been a loyal contributor to the committee, and these are three-year terms. I think there was, as we understand it, there was a kind of administrative oversight last year because Mr. Warren's term really should have started July 1, 2020. Again, it's a three-year term. So I'd like to entertain at least putting a motion on the floor to reappoint William Warren to the Municipal Technology Committee for a term beginning July 1, 2020, for three years. And I would look to have a so-move, and if there's a second, if there's then any discussion, we can have that, or we can move to a vote.
So moved.
Moved by Katara? I'm sorry, is there a second?
This is Kamali. I'll second that.
Okay. Seconded by Kamali. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Just one question. At the town meeting, there was a proposal or pamphlet on the table from the, like, the town's technology strategic plan. And I remember there was someone that spoke to that. What's, how does this operate in conjunction to the overall town technology committee or?
This is Will Warren. The, the committee is actually drafting that plan, and we have been soliciting comments from all of the town's departments and other groups, other committees, to make certain that we're including, you know, people's needs for this plan going forward.
Okay. I just, yeah, that helps me to understand kind of the partnership there.
Other questions? All right. Let's take a vote then. Roll call vote. Kamali?
Yes.
Katara?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And where's Kim? Kim?
Yes.
And I vote yes. It's unanimous. Mr. Warren, I would just like to add, thank you very much for your service. I go back, you know, being involved with kind of getting this, getting this set up. And it's great to see folks that are committed and capable on this committee. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you for the opportunity.
We also have an ex officio appointment on this committee, which is really from our IT group. Andy Mariotti, who is no longer here, is no longer on the committee. But, and I don't know whether we vote this, but I guess we probably should, just, just for housekeeping purposes. So Maurice Myrie, we're going to put him forth as our ex officio member on the committee. This is, this is a position that doesn't have a specific term. Position serves really at the will of the committee. So I'd entertain a motion to appoint Maurice Myrie as an ex officio member of the Municipal Technology Committee. Is there a so-moved?
So moved.
Is there a second? Moved by Kamali?
I'll second Jen.
Seconded by Jen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Kamali?
Yes.
Jen? You're muted.
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Katara?
Yes.
I vote yes. So that is unanimous. So next item is the Subcommittee Liaison Assignments. Hopefully, you all had a chance to at least look at the, the assignments that we're kind of moving into this year from last year with. And there are, there are at least three openings, two of them, I think, well, I guess at least four openings, because Jessica was a member of these subcommittees last year. It was the Policy Development Subcommittee, Liaison to NSPAC, Liaison to the Technology Working Group, which I'm not too, you know, I'm not sure that I'm aware of how often that group meets. Maybe, Greg, you can help me out on that one. And then there's the Public Relations Communications Subcommittee. And I'm also not aware of how often that group meets. But I do, I do know that the Policy Subcommittee, Policy Development Subcommittee is, does meet often. Katara Warren is, was a member last year and hopefully will continue. But is there, is there anyone that would be willing to be appointed to the, to the, at least as a second member on that Subcommittee?
Roger, I can, this is Kim. I can do that. I can take Jessica's spot.
I was staring right at you on the screen.
Feel it, Roger.
Have been able to feel it?
Yes.
And that's great. All right. So Katara, are you willing to continue, I hope?
Yep. Happy to do it.
Thank you. Now, I don't believe we have, and obviously, other members can, can certainly, participating in these meetings. You know, their, their, you know, policy development is certainly very important. And do we? Greg, do we vote these appointments?
Kind of. No, I think that.
All right. That's, that's good.
Roger, Roger, can I just ask a question?
Please.
So since the, this list, last year, the Capital Planning Schools Research Subcommittee was created, and I'm the designated member on that, I'm just wondering if we want to put that on the list, just, just for the sake of keeping track?
No, it should be on the list. It should be added to the list.
Roger, the chair.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
One of my recommendations is I will go through this list and which committees are active, and which, which are kind of dormant right now. So that will give you an indication of, you know, what are, what are the primary committees, because there's a number of working groups that just are, are not active currently. Either the work is concluding, or they're just in a hiatus. So I'm not sure if that will be helpful to the committee members as they decide which, which subcommittees they would be interested in participating on.
Well, I think that would be, well, I think that would be extremely helpful, certainly for me, and I'm suspecting that it's for, for everyone. As I recall, there were, I guess I'm going to, I ended up viewing this in kind of three categories. Those that, that really needed to be moved on pretty quickly and, and were active. And then those, then there were some that really weren't active at all, if you will, but they, but they, but, but they could become active at some point, but they're, they aren't active, and but they're there as a placeholder. And then I guess I'm going to call, I'm going to call them the group in the middle that does have some activity. So other people may, may not think about that the same as, as I have, but I think it'd be, well, really important to, to understand what, what, what is, what is active, Greg? All right. Moving on, Jessica was also the liaison to NSPAC. I'm kind of looking at my monitor again. Are you feeling it, Kim? I'm kind of looking at my monitor again, are you feeling it, Kim?
No, I actually would encourage someone else to do this because.
Okay. I know you're, I know you're, you're at the meetings.
Yes. So. I, I'll, I'll do everything else on the list that Jessica was on. If we can, if somebody else will, will do that one.
I try to attend those meetings as much as I can. As, as Kim, as you know. But it's, but it's, I think it's good to have another committee member. Assigned to the committee because it is important. And. It also helps if, if, if there's at least one of us. At the meeting, I, I, I do think it's very important, so is anyone?
Looking at you, Roger.
Well, I, I would absolutely. I would absolutely attend as many of those meetings as I possibly can. Do we have anyone else that's? Willing to do that?
Yeah, this is Kamali, I'll do that.
All right, great. We'll figure that out between Kamali and I, but. Done. So the other two that were, that Jess was on was the Liaison to the Technology Working Group, and I. Do we, should we wait and, and take a look?
That is one that is, is dormant, so we're looking.
Right, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Now, the whole area of Public Relations Communications is a subject that. You know, we've had some discussion on and. And I think appropriately we'll continue to have discussion on. Where, where are you on that Subcommittee, Greg?
I think. I, I think it's some work, future work that we will do in terms of actually forming a working group to kind of look at. Marketing and communications. So that is a committee I hope to make active. You know, late this summer, early fall.
Okay, so. Why don't we then move forward? And, and await. Kind of your analysis of which committees are more active or less active, and then we'll, we'll, we'll have a second step on this. What we know now is that, is that Kim is gonna join. Katara on Policy Development Subcommittee. I'll remain on NSPAC with, with Kamali. As. I'm a second member. And. I don't think there's anything else critical unless. Any of the committee members tonight, you know. Want to specifically talk about any, any other ones at the moment.
Yeah, Roger, I would just suggest that you just go ahead and keep the Communications Subcommittee. You know, we know we need it, it's probably actually the one that was saying. The Technology Liaison, so whoever's on the. Communication Subcommittee is gonna be talking with Maurice, they're gonna be talking with the community, they're gonna be talking with Greg. Kim, you've expressed some passion about that, I don't know if you just wanna throw your ring hat in the ring for that?
Sure, sure, yeah, thanks, Kamali.
So Roger, just from an operational perspective. The key one is payroll and warrants, which is, we have covered. And then we do policy work over the summer, so. From, from our operational standpoint, those are the key. Appointments, and it looks like those are all set.
Right, one question, what about the one that says the Audit Subcommittee? Up top?
Yes, so. Because the, we are on to the town, because we're part of the town department, it's a little bit different. We don't have a specific audit. That we look, look at, if we were to do an internal audit. Then we would form that committee, we do not have plans this, this upcoming year to do an internal audit at this point in time.
And as far as the committees we haven't discussed, and there are some that have several members. There's absolutely no reason, and at times maybe even a benefit to. Shifting, shifting people. Who haven't been on a committee to. You know, to, to be willing to join a committee, so. You know, we'll look at that as we kind of look at. You know, Greg's analysis, and Kamali, I wasn't suggesting at this point. That we retire any of these committees, we just don't know enough about some of them to. I guess, kind of make, make our, our, our best decisions about them yet. Other questions on this? All right. So. Let's move to. Now, let's, 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 let's move to the number five, which is the vote on the Statement of Interest for Neri School.
All right, so I'm going to just provide a brief overview and then turn it over to, I'm still away. Around the specific motion and vote that's required, so I'm going to share my screen. So. For the. Interest of the community as well as the committee, I just want to provide a brief overview of the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Otherwise known as MSBA. So what is the MSBA? So it's a quasi-independent government authority. And it was created back in 2004 to reform the process for funding capital improvement projects. In the Commonwealth's public schools. And really its fundamental purpose is to work with local communities to create affordable, sustainable. And energy-efficient schools across Massachusetts. And actually, it's funded through. One, one penny of the state sales tax. So every time you purchase something, you actually contribute to the MSBA's funds. And really it collaborates with municipalities. To invest in the most fiscally responsible and educationally appropriate solutions. To create safe and sound and sustainable learning. So that's the MSBA's overall purpose. MSBA has several programs too, which I will just share briefly tonight. The Core Program and Accelerated Repair Grant Programs. Are non-entitled and competitive programs. Most recently, as the committee may recall. The district participated in MSBA's Accelerated Repair Grant Program. At the Finn Elementary School, and this past fall feels like years ago. But we completed a MSBA Accelerated Repair Program for the Boiler at Finn Elementary School. And accelerated repair projects really are roofs, boilers, and windows. The Core Program is more about renovations or building new facilities. So grants are distributed by the MSBA Board of Directors based on need and urgency. And they evaluate need and urgency through a process called a Statement of Interest. And to begin a process working with MSBA. An SLI is submitted. And an SLI submission is not an invitation to MSBA's capital pipeline. It's just merely the first step to even be considered for a project. And again. MSBA's Board of Directors will determine if. The submission, the SLI, really meets the level of criteria. To be considered to be invited into the program. The SLI that we would submit would really speak to the deficiencies. And specifically, we'll be talking about Neri Elementary School. And how those deficiencies of the building. Make it challenging to deliver the educational program that we want to deliver in that particular building. So for the past. Year, we have worked very closely with the Town's School Research Subcommittee. To do a few things. To really have conversations around the town's overall facility. Facilities and usage, including all town buildings, including schools. As you recall, as a school committee, we did authorize. A study on enrollment. And we contracted with NASDAQ to look at enrollment trends and patterns. And lastly, we. Contracted out to do a facility condition assessment. And that assessment was done on Neri School, and that was conducted by an outside consultant. And that gave us some really good data around strengths and areas of need at Neri School. So. Prior school committee meeting, we did speak about submitting a Statement of Interest for Margaret in Neri Elementary School. And as part of the SLI process, requires a vote by the Select Board and School Committee. We will be meeting with the Select Board this Tuesday, June 15th. To present similar information and see the board's. Support of submitting an SLI. And that's the IDU date is June 25th, 2021, at 11:59 PM, so Keith has that on his calendar, he's. He has that, he's gonna stay up late that day. And so if we do submit an SLI, I think it's very important to be clear what happens next. Basically, what happens next is the MSBA staff will review our SLI. And work to validate the issues identified in our submission. And during the process, similar to what they did during the Finn Boiler Project, they'll have a site visit. They'll ask clarifying questions, they'll, they'll come out and do tours to see if there's any additional information. That they need in order to make a decision. And then if MSBA invites our district into the eligibility period, which is the next phase after submitting the statement. Then MSBA will work collaboratively. To determine potential solutions that were identified in the Statement of Interest that we potentially submit on June 25th. So again, I just wanted to provide an overview of MSBA. How it functions, its purpose, and the beginning process, the initial process. And at this time. I will turn it over to Keith, who's been working on the Statement of Interest. Along with Becky Pogrino and Kathleen Valente to prepare for a potential submission. And Keith.
Thanks, Greg. Kamali, you have a question?
Yeah, I was just curious, do you know from your, your previous involvement with the Finn Boiler Project? What the pool of applicants, like what's the volume of the pool of applicants? That might be submitting something like this, are we talking about? A hundred schools, fifty, or like thousands that they have to choose from?
So varies from year to year, Kamali. I believe last year, they were, there were twenty-five submitted in entirety over the Commonwealth. And I believe maybe a third of those were invited into the process. So it's, and it can vary depending on, on the year and, and where districts are in terms of their, their capital projects.
And the, Keith, you were involved with writing the previous SLI?
I was not, but I learned a lot about it really fast.
Okay, I was just gonna ask, is the same team or, you know, group of people working on that? This SLI as did the previous one?
Yes, it, yes, it is, and actually, we did submit an SLI for the Neri Roof. Not last year, but the year before, so we did gain a lot of experience from that and used practically all of it to inform this one. Although this application is much more involved than the one that was for the accelerated program. Like, like it was for the Finn Project and what we put in for, for the Neri Roof. So a couple of pieces like Greg, that was, that was a great summary of what MSBA is gonna do, and to talk about. The Neri School a little more in depth, we, we really had to combine a bunch of different things, we used the facilities conditions assessment that was done by Vertex. They did a very comprehensive job of looking at the major systems in the building and took in a, a lot of observations. Ninety-plus percent of it is, is things we already were aware of, and that was something I shared at a, a previous meeting. The application itself allows us to go into depth, not only about those particular systems. That were not necessarily in failing condition, but certainly in poor condition or things that needed to be upgraded. And we were able to go through this application and answer all the questions that, that were needed. We did have to do a little digging, there was some research involved, and I do thank Brian Fantoni for, for his work of having to go into the. The Neri Vault and, and find different things about, about the building itself, but we were able to. Answer all the questions without any interruption or need to go out for more information. The, the key, the two key priorities, and it is a part of the vote that you will take today, you'll see about halfway down. There's two priorities that are identified, and there's a series of ones that have to be selected. We chose to choose number five and number seven, which really identifies that we do have specific systems like the roof. Like windows, like some of the HVAC equipment that does need to be replaced, and then in seven, it says that the. The replacement or addition will be for an obsolete building, and that's where you see more things related to like ADA compliance. Different things of that nature that would allow us to really. Bring, bring Neri to a greater level of accessibility for, for all people. When we dove into the different questions, like I mentioned last month, we certainly were able to talk about the. Electrical system that needs to be upgraded, it is a building from the 1970s and a majority of its electrical circuits are that old. We've been very fortunate so far, but we are maxed out, there aren't any additional openings left in the, the Neri School to add, whether it be a major server. Or an HVAC unit of that type without doing a significant overhaul. When we look at the roof, the roof is probably the thing that needs the, the greatest attention, that is why we have previously submitted to MSBA. It is a roof from 1990, so it is well beyond its years of expect, life expectancy. And those flat roofs, you know, typically after they get about twenty years old, you gotta start paying close, close attention to them. The other things that were popped up, and it certainly came in through the Vertex report, were the windows. Thankfully, we haven't had any major windows or major problems with the windows, but they were identified as not being energy efficient. They are single-pane windows throughout the building, and that would be obviously a, a layer of this renovation or rebuild that would be, would be fixed and allow us to. Improve the energy efficiency of the building. The other half of it, the other half of the application really looks at the programming. And Principal Valenti and I had the opportunity to kind of collaborate around the questions. We certainly looked at a lot of different spaces and what it does and doesn't do for Neri. We specifically identified the Learning Center, which acts as the music space right now, which if you haven't been in it, is kind of a stadium-style room. That it has. Interesting tiers to it, I, I think it's a, it's a very unique space, and I think we've made the most of it, but it certainly isn't something that. Maximizes different types of opportunities. The other piece that's probably visible to most people is the gymnasium, the gymnasium is actually a very large space. But it's divided by a concrete wall in the middle, and you'll see in much more modern buildings that that. Divider would not be a wall, but would be in something that was retractable. That's certainly something that has hinged, you know, what Neri is capable of doing in that space pretty readily. And then when we get into the, the depths of Neri is where you really find some of the unbelievable work that's been done to maximize space, I didn't know some of the stuff that Kathleen shared, but. Just the creativity around different areas of the building, specifically around the interior of how it's used for different types of. Specialized instruction and different types of groups. Has been pretty remarkable over the years, and it happened so seamlessly that you don't even realize it's not really. Optimal for the learning experiences, so Kathleen, I don't know if there's anything that you wanted to add to that specifically that would be a good example about. The type of programming that we could do with, with a deeper investigation.
No, I think you covered most, a lot of it, I think we have been very creative, creating a STEM environment in our laboratory, certainly not. As current as it could be, but we've made do in our science lab as well, it's a, it's a makeshift lab. But we could certainly use something. Um, but we could certainly use, um, something more current with greater technology and, and greater design. So those are just some of the things, but like you shared, Keith, we've done really well with the places that, spaces that we've designed. It just would, um, it'd be wonderful to have those spaces to, to come into the, where we're at in our, in our education system now.
And one key thing you'll see from nineteen seventies buildings is, uh, not really an open air or, you know, outdoor, not outdoor. But outwardly facing spaces being the majority, there are a lot of interior spaces at nearie that do not have any windows at all. And that did come up a bunch through Kathleen and I's analysis of how even sunlight can really, uh, improve the, the learning experience. So we did get down to that granular of a detail when we were looking at nearie and reflecting upon the different spaces. And, and like I said, you know, we, we did consult our strategic plan, we looked at that through the lens of the program we were able to offer. The energy efficiency and just maybe the type of experiences we could bring. It's gonna be very interesting. Hopefully we are accepted into and with your, with your blessing and vote tonight, we'd be able to put forth the application. And I'm eager to see what types of options are, are available to us, but, uh, we are ready to go to make the submission. We have all the necessary information in place and the application has been prepared. Um, and as soon as we get the necessary votes, we would be able to do it without delay. I'd be happy to, uh, answer any questions about specific programming or, or systems of the building that you might have questions on.
Okay, I don't see any hands up. I think we're ready to vote. Um, Greg, I, this format would seem to me to be important. So, I, I guess I wanna put it in the record, um, as, as it's printed. So I would entertain a motion for the following, so moved to move the following. Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on June ninth, two thousand twenty one. Prior to the statement of interest submission closing date. Southborough School Committee of Southborough, Massachusetts, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances. Has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the Statement of Interest Form dated June twenty fifth. Two thousand twenty one, for the Margaret A. Nearie Elementary School located at fifty three Parker Bill Road. Which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted. To the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Replacement, renovation or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems. To increase energy conservation and decrease energy related costs. Replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state. And approved local governments. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form. The Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application. The awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Or commits the town of Southborough to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Do I have a so moved?
So moved by Kamali.
Moved by Kamali, do I have a second?
I'll second that. Katara.
Seconded by Katara, I'm looking for hands up, is there any discussion on this at this point? I thought that it was pretty well presented. All right. Hearing no discussion, we'll do a roll call vote. Katara?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that vote is unanimous. So we are now moving on to old business, COVID nineteen update.
So I can, the one thing I can guarantee that I haven't been able to guarantee anything this year is that this will be the last. Uh, school committee COVID update, um, for twenty twenty one, since this is the last school committee meeting of Southborough. So, um, I just, before I turn it over to Mary Ellen, just wanna acknowledge Mary Ellen and her leadership, um, throughout the year. Um, she's been outstanding, um, and a true advocate for the health and safety of our students, faculty and staff. So, um, thank you, Mary Ellen. Um, with that said, now you can provide an update of all the great work you're doing.
And, and hear, hear to that.
Thank you, but you know that we couldn't do it without the team that's, that's right here on your screen. Then we definitely would not be where we are today. So Southborough, the best news has had zero cases. Since the be, the end of April in the school system, so it's been pretty amazing. I mean, we've had low cases throughout the district, but Southborough said zero for the past five weeks. So that is an amazing statistic, so things are going well. Since the last time we were together, some things have changed. Um, the students no longer need to wear masks outside. Um, they still do wear them inside the building, uh, but outside the building, they do no, no longer need to wear masks. They need to wear them on the bus and inside the building, which is news. We're waiting for, um, guidance for next year. As to what that will be. Our numbers for vaccination rates in our, in the town of Southborough are amazing. For every age group that's eligible, um, I think we're in the top five, it, top ten, if not top five of the state. For, um, the percentage of, uh, people vaccinated, which is great news. Uh, so we will look forward to our, um, planning for the opening of school in the fall. And hopefully it'll be a little bit more normal than we were used to the last, in the last year. Um, Greg, can I share my screen, please?
Yes.
Thanks. So I would like to take this opportunity to, um, just really thank the nurses. Who have been instrumental, if I can get to, for the present mode, sorry, who have been instrumental in navigating this whole year. So these are the numbers, Southborough Nursing Numbers, by the numbers here. So this year they've had three thousand nine hundred and seventy office visits. Plus, an additional seventeen hundred and twenty nine medications administered. Plus an additional thirteen hundred and ninety one medical procedures and four hundred and four exams. So they have done all of this in addition to fourteen thousand eight hundred and eleven COVID screenings. That have been done since we began screening in November. So if you compare those numbers to the years in the past. As you can see, last year we were full time in person about seventy percent of the time and full remote thirty percent of the time. And full time in person, the year before, one hundred percent of the time. I think the numbers are a little bit flip flopped here, and we were probably full time in person between twenty, between the middle school and the elementary schools. Between twenty two and thirty percent of the time. So they have done an amazing job this year. Their whole structure of how their health office worked has changed, and I just want to take this. Opportunity to thank them for all they've done. So when we look back in the year we've had. The school nurses did so much more than Band-Aids and ice packs, with some people think that's all that school nurses though, but it's definitely not. So we started last year, a year ago, we were delivering technology and food throughout the summer and the spring, riding the buses. We checked in with students while everybody else was safer at home. We were riding the buses and checking in on them. They created health education resources and videos. We've had, they had guest speakers to do bike safety virtually. To do, the nurses did hand washing and, um, bus safety virtually. They did just amazing things. They reassured anxious staff, students and parents. They administered flu vaccines in the fall and winter, and they helped with COVID nineteen vaccines. At the regional sites in the spring. They've created all kinds of tracking forms for symptoms, travel and close contacts. They've made thousands and thousands of phone calls. Um, they've interviewed countless people while contact tracing. And they performed the weekly COVID nineteen screening for staff and students, which I think. Ultimately reassured our staff and decreased anxiety for everybody about returning to school. So they did all of these extra things in addition to their everyday school nurse responsibilities. Of making a positive difference for every child every day by meeting the physical and mental health needs of all of our students. And supporting their academic success by helping students stay healthy in school and ready to learn. So I just wanna take this opportunity, like I said, that we would not be here without them. Um, they have been amazing all year long, um, and they deserve, uh, standing ovation, the highest. Uh, accolades that we could give them. In addition to our nurses, we could never forget our medical advisory team. Who we definitely would not be where we are today if it wasn't for their expertise and their knowledge that they shared with us on a volunteer basis. So we had Dr. Jennifer Carey, Dr. Andrea Ceranello, Dr. Saftar Medina, Dr. Sarah Veltin, Dr. Heather Alker. Dr. Kristen Black, Dr. Amy Astigan Costigan. We also had, um, Taylor Black. Who is the new public health nurse in Southborough and Emily Amico. Who was the former public health nurse in Southborough. So with all of the expertise here, they have got us through this crazy year of COVID nineteen. So if you see any of these faces in town, please thank them. They are residents of Northborough and Southborough, and I've volunteered their time. And you need to, along with thanking all of those people, everybody that's here on this screen has done an amazing job working as a team to get us. Through this year, so thank you all.
Yes, indeed. Uh, thank you all. Um, I, I, I don't think. I don't think it's easy to really understand the effort and the excellence that's been provided by this team. I think, you know, some of us are, are starting to better understand it as, as, as we move through the year, but, uh, very impressive. And at least now we'll be able to, uh, potentially recognize the faces, you know, uh, which, which would have been hard to do a couple of months ago.
And Katara, do you have a question?
Katara, sorry?
No, that's okay. I, I don't have a question. I just need to express my thanks also. I know Roger just did. But it's just been an incredible, um, show of strength and work and, um, thoughtfulness. And I, you know, I, I just having seen all the presentations in the school committee meetings that I know were put together by you, Mary Ellen. And also the, um, medical advisory team and all those incredible volunteers helping to do this. And having also interacted with various school nurses and during the course of all of this, they're always cheerful and helpful. And, um, you would never know that they're sort of in the thick of this, you know, crazy experience. And, um, it's just been, uh, an amazing and fantastic thing to see. And, you know, we couldn't have gotten through the year without all of that, obviously. So, um, I just am very grateful, and I just want to express that as well. So thank you.
Thank you. We are very blessed with, with all of the staff that's worked throughout the year. But our medical advisory team has been sought after by lots of other districts for their expertise. So we need to count our blessings twice with them.
So Roger, the only thing I'll add is that, um, as we look forward to the fall of twenty one. That we, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has signaled that there will be no social distancing requirements. Um, we are trying to get a sense of what that means. Does that mean no social distancing requirements in the lunchroom? Um, you know, it's snack time, but it is a good signal that, um, when we return in the fall, things will look. Um, much more familiar to our students in terms of we're able to move furniture back in classrooms. The desk, uh, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education also shared that it is working closely with, uh, DPH. Um, and it will release any required, um, COVID nineteen mitigation efforts. Um, to districts in the, um, mid to late July. So I think all signals look like we'll have a normal school start, um, in, in September. Which is, which is great news.
It is great news. All right, um, capital planning update.
Oh, Roger, can I ask?
I'm sorry. I didn't see, I didn't see your end up.
That's okay, I just put it up. Um, I have a quick question about the medical advisory team. And if, are you taking a break over the summer? Are they coming back in the fall? Like, do you have them locked down, so nobody else steals them?
So we actually, we have our meetings every Tuesday. Um, I think our last meeting was yesterday, unless something else comes up. But we did, um, we have plans to keep them intact, so they will be there for us. We won't be meeting weekly, probably, hopefully we won't need to meet weekly, but they are there. And they were all committed to continuing on this journey with us, and they are just an amazing resource, so.
Awesome, sounds great.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, uh, capital planning update.
So the only update, um, in addition to the, the MSBA Statement of Interest. Is just a joint communication that was sent out on, um. In partnership with the Southborough, uh, Capital Planning Subcommittee in conjunction with the School Committee. Just informing, uh, the community about the work that the school research subcommittee did, um, over the year and plans moving forward. So that communication went out, uh, yesterday. Um, and our goal is to get that communication out to as many citizens as possible. So that they're, they are aware of, um, the partnership between the town planning and the school planning. And, and the master plans that exist in the town of Southborough.
Any questions? All right, um, thank you. Let's move to number three, communications.
So that is just an ongoing, um, agenda topic. Um, I know at the last meeting we talked about. You know, how can we improve communications? How can we celebrate and communicate all of the great work and great events that are happening? Uh, throughout our schools. Um, I think as we look to the summer and the fall. I think, um, developing communication plan and strategy and, and utilizing some of the expertise in our community. Similar to the way we've used the medical advisory team. I know that there's a lot of marketing expertise. And we're also looking at our communication tools so that we're, um, more easily able to share and communicate. Um, the great work that's happening within our schools, so more information to follow as we develop those plans. But would be happy to answer any questions or hear any suggestions.
All right, I don't see any hands up. Um, start time updates.
So, and, um, actually this, this afternoon I was interviewed by a, um, upcoming sophomore. By Algonquin Regional High School, who works for the Harbinger, and they are writing an in-depth article around school start time. And what to expect in the fall. And one of the questions she asked was, when did we start, um, thinking about start time? So it brought me back to two thousand and fourteen, so it has been a, a many-year journey. Um, with many, many folks dedicated and committed to bringing it to fruition. So, um, I just, you know, it's been a long journey and we're excited about what, uh, what the fall will look like. And Keith LaVoy and Jean Pintovin, hard at working on the details. Our school principals have been working with faculty and staff, and we're trying to get the word out, um, to families of what to expect this fall. So Keith will provide a, uh, presentation on, um, start time and, and what the fall will look like.
Kamali, you have a question before Keith gets started?
Uh, yes, I do. Um, sorry I didn't raise my hand fast enough, but I just wanted to know, um, regarding the medical advisory team. I know they, they had their last meeting, but you know how last year before, um, we opened. Uh, and we had multiple meetings to just decide on the opening. Um, you know, do you, do we wanna put something on the calendar now so that we have kind of a. Checkpoint or, you know, just, or we can just maybe call a meeting on the fly if that's possible. But, you know, with all these new things that come out each month or each week, I'm pretty sure we're gonna need kind of a checkpoint. Before school starts back.
Yes, so our intention, Kamali, is to convene the medical advisory team probably early August. And, and review the guidelines and see if there's any change of direction that is required of us. And that should give us enough time to, um, report back to the school committee and adjust any of our plans. Based on what information is available at that time.
Yeah, I think that's definitely necessary, and even to prepare the nurses again, you know, are we gonna continue with? Yeah, I think that's definitely necessary. And even to prepare the nurses again, you know, are we going to continue with programs? Start some modified version of with the testing? I don't know, the, all the polling that we did. I think, yeah, August, early August would be a good timeframe to make sure we have those answers. Parents want them now, but I think it's, you just can't know because things are so fluid. So as long as we have a mindset to start in early August, that would be good.
Yeah, I think we need to wait. Oh, sorry, Greg. I think we need to wait until we get the, what DSC and DPH are going to send down to us, which will be in July. So, and then we'll convene everybody.
I was just going to comment, we would love to know now too.
Yes.
I mean, I think just with every time that we communicate, every time the district communicates with parents, that they just reiterate, like, we don't know either, right? We don't know until July either and we will get the information to you. Like, it's coming. So that there's not a lot of, you know, there's so much information that comes out like about it that has really nothing to do with it. But like, it's just, you know, you're competing against that. So just knowing, like, you're going to get our answer, you know, before, before school starts.
No, we agree.
Okay, I'm sorry. That was really my only question on that. Mary Ellen, sorry, Keith, if I was interrupting.
No, not a problem at all. And actually, this is something that we can prepare for. So that, that's the good thing about what I'm about to present. And we certainly have done some communicating so far. But this will hopefully show you a little more depth of the planned and the extent of the work that's been done. So I'm going to share my screen and get a presentation going. Can everyone see that? Okay, great. So I did want to take the chance. Like Greg said, this work did start way back in 2014 and is coming to fruition. We are implementing the new start time configuration on September 1st, 2021. And to prepare us for that, we developed a implementation plan. But first, I kind of want to go back a little bit and share some of the detail of why we are making this adjustment. I think it's important to revisit that because so much of this is weighted in logistics. We want to really go back and remember why we are making this, this change. So certainly, when the start, start time task force started to meet, it was really anchored in what was a healthy decision for our entire community. I do want to thank Jen Primack for her work on this. I think I remember having meetings with her and talking about a lot of these topics that you see on the slide now, but just going into depth, not just exploring all the health benefits of sleep. There's no arguing that. But then we really had to decide what was feasible and what was financially responsible to do for our district. And that's what the anchor behind the plan that we decided to go forth with last spring in May of 2020 for an implementation in September of 2021. So the next portion of what we're doing, we're kind of a third of the way into where we are. And I want to give you the, it's segmented into three different parts, really. It's focusing on the communication, the implementation of the new plan, and then the analysis. Because the work is not done on September 1st. Actually, a lot of it's going to be beginning on September 1st. So we really analyze the routes and see the things that we need to do to make the adjustments necessary to make it work better. So it is broken up into three parts, which are communication, implementation, and analysis. The communication plan, which has already started, families in the community have received the communication about the start time change. In the early summer, which is probably going to happen right after the 4th of July, every family is going to receive a, receive a direct email. And in that communication will include the student's bus number, the identified bus stop, and the estimated time of arrival in the morning and drop off in the afternoon. We are going to be able to give that granular level of data to each individual family and each individual student so they know at least what to expect. So gone are the times when you're trying to trace down bus routes that were posted online. You are going to get a personalized communication to help with the transition process. The other piece that's really anchored in communication is the app that we onboarded this year called Here Comes the Bus. I know Clayton enjoys that name and it's, it's, it's been a really beneficial tool for our families to know where the bus is. And a lot of the, the kinks of the system have been worked out and it's been very reliable for some. And we've gotten a lot of positive feedback that even during the year of COVID, where there was so much uncertainty, at least they had some certainty when, when the bus was going to be pulling up. So that will be something that is embedded with the routes for next year and will be something that can be utilized even as early as the start of school. So there'll be no delay. And we will certainly include that in our ongoing communication with families, reminding them to stay current with that app, which might require some updating, maybe logging in and logging off. But Jean Pinto, as Greg mentioned, our transportation assistant, will be helping me with that system and making sure parents are as informed as possible. We've also really started a lot of different phases of this, the implementation process itself. Certainly, the creation of the routes is, is anchored in a lot of hard work, an analysis of traffic. Certainly, the timing of the routes is so important. When we dove into the routes, we wanted to make sure that they worked well. And when we've done that exploration, we've relied on NRT, North Reading Transportation, for their expertise around things and the route creation. And we're off to a very start. So that will be something that we're able to post relatively shortly. Greg also mentioned some of the logistical changes that the buildings will have to undergo. Certainly, there are schedule adjustments that were necessary and the principals were very proactive about that. And then we certainly reviewed the different things that will, the configurations that will happen that will be different from what we're doing now. Specifically, having Trotter students ride with Algonquin students is something that we're going to continue to monitor and keep an eye on, as well as having Nearie, Woodward, and Finn students riding the bus at the same time. Those types of configurations are actually quite common across the Commonwealth. Just doing a little dipsticking on that, I discovered that many of the Reed area schools have that similar type of configuration. The other thing worth noting, and you'll see it in a later slide, is that we will have a tiered model. So like I mentioned, we will have Algonquin and Trotter students riding together. And then we're condensing our three-tier into two-tier, and the second tier will include Nearie, Woodward, and Finn students riding together. And we really, when we really dove deep into that, we discovered that we are able to do that logistically. We're able to fit those students onto the buses, the 15 buses that we have in Southborough. And we're really able to effectively design routes that get, get the school, get the kids to school on time. But like with anything in an implementation phase, we got to make sure that we're, we're striking that balance well. And that's going to be part of the ongoing work that we do. And the last phase, certainly very curious to see how September 1st goes, although we are very optimistic. You never really know how some, a plan's going to work until it's in place. So starting on September 1st, we will be doing an analysis of how things go. We want to make sure that our customer service is at the highest peak. I know Jean and I will be very available to families that have concerns or questions or problems, just like we've been for this entire year. COVID did teach us a lot and being available and responsive was a key part of that. And Jean and, and I have really tried our best to be in the forefront of answering those questions and concerns and not letting any of those things linger. So certainly, that is going to be a part of our analysis and hearing from parents and students about the experience and what can be adjusted. The other piece that's going to be done is we are going to do a simulation with NRT, which does happen every year. The drivers, the assigned drivers will get their routes, will, will test drive their assignments, will go through, will check timing and anything that might be missing. We've already done a lot of that work this spring, but certainly it's good to do a fresh run on that with maybe some new drivers that are hired over the summer or adjustments that need to be made. So we will make sure that we're ready for September 1st. Like I mentioned, Here Comes the Bus is going to help parents track, but we're going to do some tracking as well. We're able to do that through Senovia, our GPS system, and really track each individual bus and how they do, how they perform. Certainly, the timing of the buses is very important. We want to make sure that everything is working well as designed. But that'll be something that is part of the analysis phase in early September. And I do expect that as things unfold, I will be providing a update to each of the school committees on, on how things are going so far, knowing that more than likely tweaks will be needed as we, as we progress through the fall and, and into the winter. So that's something that we're going to be analyzing for certainly the first few months of service as we make the transition. And this is the collective group across the district of the buses. It kind of arranges the current start and end times as well as the new and shows you the tiered system to the far right of what we're going to be doing. So if you focus on the yellow sections of this, of this chart, you'll see that's where the Southborough buses are, which is in the top half. And this next slide will show you a little more zoomed in of what we're going to be doing for the September 1st and the adjustments that are needed. And I think that's, that is the last slide, so I'll gladly answer any questions. Start with Katara.
Thank you. So thank you for this presentation. This really has been a, a work in progress and it's exciting to see something coming of all of that. My question has to do with the, the different start and dismissal times at the elementary schools. The way, the way, and I know I asked about this before, and I don't know if when you're mentioning, we'll adjust as we go, if that includes adjusting any of the start and dismissal times? Because we're finding that the buses, you know, that tier two of the buses actually can go between the schools faster than the committee originally thought or the study group. Because right now, you know, the way I look at this, if so, I'll talk about the dismissal time. So Nearie gets out at 3:00, those kids get picked up, and then they're on the bus just waiting to still pick up kids until 3:25, maybe 3:30 after they get all the Finn kids. And then the bus goes and starts dropping people off, right? So it just seems, just seems really long and the same in the beginning, you know, the start of the day, but in reverse. And so I'm just wondering, is that, when you say that, that things will be adjusted, is that one of the things that could potentially be adjusted so that the bus rides aren't too long?
Absolutely. I think that's going to be the focus of what we're looking at as things unfold. I, I really hope that we don't have to make any changes to these times and we can more look at the route performance as being the thing that would be adjusted. You know, moving a street here and there can, can make that difference. We are predicting though, that these end times specifically will, you know, will, will work. And we've set up the routes so that they don't begin until the bus gets there. So that's the way we're kind of defining it as it goes forward. But we are confident, you know, students, especially Nearie and Trotter students are going to be on the bus longer than they are now. But we don't see it to be exponentially greater. It'll definitely be more time on the bus. But that's what we're kind of forecasting so far, but it will be something that we're going to look at carefully, Katara. So the hope is that I don't have to go back to Principal Ryan and say we have to make an adjustment because that's a large undertaking that the principals have taken on with this. Even adjusting 15 minutes can make a big difference. So the hope is that we don't have to do that. But certainly, if needed, we will make those types of adjustments.
So, so I just have a follow-up question, which is, so does that mean, are they going to be dropping off kids between pickups? Or no, they get all the kids?
No. Nearie, Nearie, Nearie will go, Nearie students will be picked up, they'll head to Woodward, and then they'll head to Finn and then begin their route.
Keith, I just want to add that, you know, we're assuming that 100% of our students are riding the buses.
Yes, good point.
We will have, so the calculations that we're working with are, every student will ride the bus and be dropped off, which obviously is not, not what happens. But it gives us a good idea of what the ceiling is in terms of the maximum bus ride. So those are the things we're working on right now to make sure that kids aren't on buses for an extraordinary amount of time. And we're, Keith, I think we're pretty confident that our initial routing and bus times are very positive. They're not, they're not too far from what kids experience at this point in time.
That's, that's true, Greg. They are, they are more, so I don't want to give false home that they're going to be the same. They will be longer, especially for Trotter and Nearie students, but it did come back better than expected for the amount of time that the buses are going to need to run for. So that is correct.
And I just have one more follow-up question. Um, so currently Woodward and Finn have the same start and end time. And I saw that in the new plan for Northborough, that's still true of multiple schools in Northborough. But for Southborough, it's now staggered. Do you know why? Was that not working to have them be at the same time?
Because the way that the, the buses work in Northborough is that they're neighborhood schools. So the way that the 17, all 17 buses go to Nearie, Woodward, and Finn. In Northborough, only a selected number of buses go to each of the schools. So we're able to divide the fleet to go to the different buildings. And that's why you don't need a staggered, more, a greater staggered time as we do need in Southborough.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. That's all very helpful. Thank you so much.
Yeah, the grade level configuration really drives that part of it, Katara.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Welcome. Kim?
You missed Kamali.
Yeah. I just have a couple of questions. Keith, this is great work. I know there's like, probably a thousand spinning plates with all of this stuff. So, um, so logistically, do Trotter kids get on the bus and literally drive to Algonquin before they come back to Southborough and get dropped off?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And I wasn't on the committee, but I've heard that the reason that we are sort of not starting later in middle school is because there's just not enough buses. Does that mean, is that accurate?
Well, through the analysis, and Greg, feel free to chime in, one of the things that we benefit from greatly is the regional transportation reimbursement. So all of the buses that we have in Northborough and Southborough, Southborough must go to Algonquin in order for us to qualify for that reimbursement. So that helps out with the financial bottom line. So we can't just divide our, our fleet and, and separate them into, you know, two different groups.
So just, just a general comment, so every bus we add to our fleet is $60,000. And one of the goals that the school committee challenged the study group was to have a cost neutral solution. So our overall fleet is 32 buses, 17 go to Northborough, and the remainder go to Southborough. And again, it's, it's a very cost-effective way for us to pay for transportation because of the transportation reimbursement at the region.
Okay. And then, um, do we have plans to sort of collect data? Like, we have these hypotheses, right, that like, it's going to help XYZ. Like, are we collecting data to like, so that we can show that that's happening or happens after we make the shift? So that maybe in the future, we can talk about sort of swinging, because, you know, the middle schoolers are, you know, teenagers too. I mean, we don't have a lot of this stuff, but, um, you know, just so that we have sort of that data moving forward.
Yeah, I think that's going to be a very important part. You know, that's not something we're going to be obviously able to report on in September. But I think when we look at it longitudinally, that is absolutely going to be something that's collected quite regularly. So I'm, I'm definitely going to be collaborating with the high school, the middle schools, and actually all, all the buildings in different ways to see how, obviously, the initial rollout impacts them. But over the long term, what are they seeing? We're going to have some good questions to ask and we're going to be collecting some good data on that, Kim.
Awesome. Thanks, Keith.
So the only thing I would add, Keith, is that our transportation system, so the software that we use to, to create these routes and do simulations is pretty powerful. But also Jean Pinto, the, the person behind kind of mapping this out, is really key in terms of working closely with the building-based administrative assistants, thinking about, is there a better way? Is there a more efficient way? So we're pretty confident that what Jean is creating will be very efficient in terms of how buses run and whether, you know, students should be dropped off first before traveling to the next school. students should be dropped off first before traveling to the next school. Um, all those factors have been considered.
Kamali?
Um. I'm trying to think. Uh, so one of the things that I'm, I wanted to suggest we be considered is um in the communications to the parents um before school start, is there a way to inform them of who their bus driver is, Mister so-and-so or Miss so-and-so? Um, in um, or you could just do something as simple as flagging, you know, same or, you know, new. Um, so that there is an expectation of who they can, you know, see on the bus route um come start of the school year.
That's interesting. I, I don't think we've done that before, but I can certainly explore that with, with NRT. Um, they, they, you know, we've been very fortunate to retain the vast majority of our drivers for many years. So it's, it's likely that it's going to be unchanged, but that's a good point. I, and you know, whether or not um, there would be a lot of turnover for next year. That's, well, time will tell. I know there's been a bus driver shortage throughout the Commonwealth and we have been fortunately not uh impacted hugely by that this year. We've had a couple of substitute drivers, but overall we've retained the same driver. So I'll, I'll, I can explore that with NRT. It's a good idea, Kamali.
Yeah, and even if it's just in the app, I use the app, which has been great, and it doesn't indicate, you know, your driver is, you know, person A or person B. For the substitutes, that's understandable. You don't know that until the last minute, but just on your general um day, that would be helpful. Um, and then to piggyback on um Kim's last point about collecting data. Um, I think also um if Ms. Pinto and yourself kind of just uh, I don't know, keep some sort of categorization of the types of calls, emails and feedback that you're going to get that first, you know, three months or so, so that we can um um parse them out, right? Because in, in, at the end of this school year, the, the bucket is full on, you know, um, it's just not working. Something's just not working and the only remediation that we can find is um going to cost us and bring us out of the cost-neutral basis. We're going, I would like to be able to say, this is the, this is what you said and this is how we're answering. So now when I go to the town and ask them, town uh meeting and ask our whole town to pay for this cost, I would like to show up there with the evidence that this is what you asked for and this is what it's going to cost. Um, so, I mean, I, like, we'll hear about it just kind of in these meetings and conversations. But if you could give us like, just keep the, keep that running information, that would be helpful.
Yep, we were able, uh, we've been able to generate a couple of systems for that, so that shouldn't be a problem, Kamali. Jen?
Um, I actually just had a comment more than questions, but I, I'm very excited about this and I just wanted to share that enthusiasm. And I think, you know, there's been so much work and time and effort spent on looking through these things. Um, that I just want us to be able to, as a community, to recognize that. And also, you know, I just, a, a couple of weekends ago, I attended um a workshop on, I was looking at the link between sleep and suicide, uh which is what I study. And they found that really in teens, um even uh like those teens who are sleeping less than eight hours, and we say that start times was a hot topic at this workshop. Um, but it was three times greater rates of suicide and depression um in teens who were asleep, had these earlier start times. Um, so I think what we're doing is really what we need to be doing. Um, I also wanted to say, you know, I think that we have an incredibly complicated busing system um because of the regional aspect. And so, you know, we're not talking about just sixty thousand dollars. So when we looked at the, you know, ideally, yeah, we'd love to move the start time of both Trotter and Algonquin to these like eight-thirty times. But dude, I can't remember what the number was, but it was something really like hugely, either the, there's no way that that was something like that would get passed at, at town. But I agree, collecting the data and looking at all of this will be important. But I think we have a really good solution here and hopefully we'll see that pan out in the data and see our kids happier and more rested.
That's the plan. Roger?
Keith, I, I just have a question. Um, and I don't know the enrollment numbers for Northborough. K through eight. But I'm, when I look at the number of buses, uh seventeen for Northburn, fifteen for Southborough, I can't help but think that um, if we did the math, the, the number of students per bus um must be a little less in Southborough than it is in Northborough. Is that a fair assumption or, or am I missing something?
I, I think that, that's pretty, pretty fair, Roger. I don't have that with me, you know, off the top of my head. Greg, do you, can you?
No, I think, I think that um, you know, it's looking at geography as well, like the distance, you know, how the town is configured in terms of where neighborhoods are. I will, will share that some of the neighborhoods and most of the neighborhoods in Northborough will be a little bit more condensed and we have neighborhood school. So it's, um, there's a lot of factors that go into it, but we do have less ridership in Southborough and we do Northborough, um but about the same percentage of students riding the buses. Um, portioned to the overall school population.
Understood. Okay. Um, well, I don't know if Jen's hand is still up, but I see Kim's hand went.
Yeah, I just have, oh, I just have a um, a couple of other quick thoughts. Um. Keith, when you come back to us in the fall with the sort of like, here's what's happening, can you include or will you be able to include sort of like what the, like, we're planning for a hundred percent, but what the actual ridership is? And, and that at, are you, do you also have room to sort of adjust if those numbers look significantly different than what you anticipate?
Yeah, yeah, we definitely do. And um ridership is going to be an important part. We haven't uh quite figured out a great way of doing that in a very efficient way. We've explored a couple of ideas. Uh, we've actually learned something from COVID, Mary, uh Mary Ellen and her uh scanner uh has been brought up in conversations of scanning the different uh specimens for testing. So uh, you know, we, we haven't figured out a great way to get that without a huge burden to the schools, but anytime I've asked for it, the school's been very cooperative getting me that data like in a, a week's batch. So let's say September eleventh through September fifteenth, they'll look at the data and then they'll get me uh, you know, a spreadsheet and that we can analyze. So usually we're able to do that type of ridership collection, but that is going to be part of uh the September review.
Should get the kids counting, assigned a counter.
Our entrepreneurs.
Yes, right, exactly. Um, and then the other question I had was, um, oh, back to what Kamali had said about um sort of tracking the issues. If like, when you come back in the fall, if we can sort of get an idea of like what what it looks like as we begin school.
Certainly.
Uh, the only last comment that I would make is that, um, you know, we're just asking parents to be patient. And also to make sure that, um, you know, it's very difficult to think about high school when you have a first grader. Um, but eventually as our students progress through our schools, they will have the benefit of starting later when they do get to the high school. So there might be a little bit of a longer bus ride, um, you know, at the elementary level. But there is a benefit to all of our, our students eventually at the high school when, when they're starting with, once they get to that, that level. But I do know that when you have a first grader, it feels like your, your son or daughter may never get to the high school, but it does happen quickly.
Thank you, everyone.
I'm muted. All right. Anything else? All right. No hands up. Um, next is the uh joint policy development update.
Sure. So in your packet was a document that outlined a proposal to capitalize on the um expertise in Northborough and the region and Southborough in terms of the work that we do around policy. So on May tenth, we had a joint policy subcommittee meeting to really talk about how we can um move the work of policy um in a very efficient and effective uh manner. And also in a way that really um allows Southborough to hear Northborough's ideas and Northborough to hear Southborough's ideas and Southborough to hear the region ideas and really have that collective mindset around policy. As many of you know, oftentimes what happens is we'll bring a, a policy forward. And then the first question that Southborough folks ask is, what is Northborough doing? And the first question Northborough folks will ask is, what is Southborough doing? So um, I've worked closely with um Cheryl Lepre and Nancy Visit and we put together a potential plan to have some joint policy work done. Um, and again, the document outlines that plan. The intention is to give this a try. Um, and there will be a, a meeting in August and we're working on a specific date. And the thinking is that we'll move forward um section G of our policy manuals in all three districts, which is personnel. Um, and try to tackle those policies and really think about those collectively um as we do policy work. So that is the plan moving forward and I'm not sure if I missed anything, Katara. And Kamali, I believe you were in, at that meeting as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, no, that sounds good. Um, that, a- and it's, it's so true. I mean, I think every time this comes up, I do say, you know, I've been on the policy committee ever since I've been on the school committee and it really is one of the first you say is like, well, what is Northborough have? What are they doing? Are they changing it? You know? And then we'll, we'll reference what they're doing. So I think this makes a lot of sense and um streamlines the process and will make everything more consistent between the districts as well. Not that we have to vote the same, but at least we'll get to hear everybody's um discussion. So.
And if I could add, uh, having spent a little time myself on it, one of the things that's, that I think became clear um was that in some instances, um you had this, well, let, let's call it the same, a policy for the same issue in one, the other, or even the third district. That even though the language was a little different, uh the policy was really the same and, and simply by cleaning up the language to make it uh a hundred percent consistent, you actually made progress in that fashion. Um, it, it looked different, but it really wasn't in some cases. Other comments? On this? All right. Um, thank you. We now move to the Coalition for Equity Updates.
Sure. So at this point in time, I will turn it over to Roda, who will, Rod, I believe you have sharing privileges, so.
Thank you. So, good evening. Um, tonight, we would like to give you an update of the work that uh the Coalition of Equity has been doing. Um, our last update was, or the first one rather, was March seventeenth at the Combined School Committee. And so this is just um a review of the work done to date. So as a, as a reminder, in a district strategic plan, um, the strategic objective number two is equity for opportunity and to provide all our students access to challenging and culturally responsive learning experiences to meet their individual needs. And um there is a lot of work that has been outlined that we're doing in this area. But one of the important things is um forming an alliance with a coalition of equity to partner with us in this work so that we can move the work forward as a district and um as a partnership. So the um, the tasks of the coalition uh are to build community partnerships, follow um focused on equity issues in our district, to have courageous conversations to support the collaborative learning about inequality and to identify and develop resources to support the learning and action. The goals of the presentation are to talk about the formation of the coalition, which uh, as I said, is an alliance, a partnership with our district. The key accomplishments for this year, the work of the coalition will continue into next year and to um talk about our future work. Uh, we want to thank the members of the coalition. There were thirty-three members this year and it was a partnership between students, educators, parents and community members, administrators and school committee members. Uh, many of our members uh who have devoted many hours to the work we've done this year um are present tonight. Um, Joy Head, uh sorry, Julie Jenks has joined us and will be helping us with the presentation. Um, we want to thank also um Kumosirarajan, who is with us this evening, Kim Tolander, Marie Allen, Mary Ellen Duggan, Kathleen Valente, Kamali O'Malley and Clayton Ryan, and of course Greg and Stephanie for being on the coalition. Um, at every meeting, we met monthly, so we've had eight meetings and with meetings in between as well uh to move the work forward was really, we created the time and space uh to share our personal stories um and to get to know each other. All this was virtual this, this year, so we'll be looking forward to being in person next year. Um, as so much more is gained when we are able to meet in person. But anyway, uh we were able to um create that opportunity for with three or four members sharing at every meeting about what brought them to the work of wanting to participate on the coalition and the, our journey through life and the meaningful points um that are probably marked uh why we're at this point today. And to quote Maya Angelou, um, it is really important to understand our past, to be able to take action in the present. And if we want to make any significant change in the future, there has to be a, a very mindful awareness of uh where we stand in history. So tonight, we'd like to talk to you about the four sub-working groups that were formed. One was a mascot study group, the Community Partnership Group, Policy Handbooks and Procedures and Curriculum and Instruction. Um, so next, uh Greg is going to give a, a brief outline of uh the work done with a, by the mascot study group.
So sure, um, a little over a year ago, um, the district received a petition that was generated by students to um remove the tomahawk as Algonquin Regional High School's mascot. Um, and the position was that it was cultural appropriation and it really didn't symbolize um the core values of the high school and also wasn't supported by um indigenous people of a symbol that um should be used by our school system. So the school committee, the regional school committee did charge um me to create a task force or a study group to um evaluate, analyze and research um this particular topic. Um, on the Coalition for Equity, we had three students who were really instrumental and, and were serving on that study group and that was Grace Nyberg, Sarah Sahid and Ben Shanzar. Um, the study group was led by um Principal Bevan and the work really focused on uh the research um making recommendations and really thinking about what are the next steps. The ultimate recommendation to the school committee, which was presented um by the study group um was that it was important to retire the tomahawk as Algonquin Regional High School's mascot and identify new mascot that really represented the core values of Algonquin Regional High School. Um, and ultimately, uh, the, the school committee uh voted to support unanimously to support um the study group's recognition or recommendation. And we are now in the process of um creating another study group to identify what that next mascot will be for Algonquin Regional High School. So again, um, I think this was work uh that began uh with advocacy from our students and they were able to bring it to fruition. Um, and I think as a result, we are moving forward with retiring the mascot and really thinking about a new, a new symbol, a new mascot for Algonquin Regional High School.
Thank you. Um. Next, Kathleen uh will address uh the work done with the community partnerships.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. So yes.
Thank you. So yes, we've worked to, most of our work has focused around communication and we working collaboratively, giving Ben Chancer most of the credit here. We created a survey for both the middle schools and the high school to identify how to best communicate and get the word out to our students at those grade levels. And we've also worked, we have looked at Northboro and Southboro, what events are happening in both of those towns? How do we best communicate those out to our all stakeholders? And we've also done some research for keynote speakers for next year, thinking about a theme that may carry us through the year. So we're still in the process of looking at the survey, coming together as a team, as a group, one more time before the beginning of next year, so that we can report out to the school committee what we are proposing and moving forward with some of our action steps.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, Greg will address policy handbooks and procedures.
I'm actually going to have Keith share about this study group.
Yeah, thank you, Greg. Certainly, as a slide indicates, this group met pretty regularly. We tried our best to meet in preparation for each of our monthly meetings to really gauge our progress. There was a lot of research done on different models of how policy is evaluated. We did look to the private sector. We looked to the public sector to see what type of exemplars were out there that we could use. And ultimately, we really relied on each other to kind of draft our own comprehensive reviewing tool. And the way that it ended, when we were looking at the whole idea of policy in our handbooks was it can be very daunting and really overwhelming. So we really wanted to come up with that protocol that would allow us to analyze it succinctly. So when we are looking, when a policy does come up for review, we have a basic set of questions that will allow us to assess from the equity lens, whether or not the policy is meeting all the criteria that we'd like it to and to what degree. So we're looking forward to putting that protocol into practice, which will be something that we will actually get a little practice on in August and perhaps September and then put it fully implemented as the fall unfolds as something that we could utilize from a bunch of different perspectives. So we're excited. You know, these are things that will be put into practice over the next couple of months. And I just think knowing that where we started a year ago and where we're ending now seems like a natural good step of how we can really analyze our policy from this lens. So looking forward to seeing how our initial rounds of this work out.
Thank you, Keith. Next, Stephanie will address curriculum and instruction.
Thank you, Rhoda. So the third working group was curriculum instruction group and we had a fantastic range of educators, students and community members. And when we first came together, it became very clear that there were endless possibilities of where we could go and what we wanted to take on. So we spent time trying to narrow that down and we came up with three areas that we wanted to take on. And so I'm going to let Kumus Sirarajan, who is a community member, tell you about the first one, which was the diversity statement.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kumus Sirarajan. I'm a subgroup parent having two daughters in the high school. I'm sorry, that's not true. My daughter just graduated. And the other one going into the junior year come fall. It's my pleasure to be here tonight. So I was in the diversity statement working group along with Rhoda Webb and Kamali O'Malley. We, to make a strong diversity statement, we decided to, we wanted to look at the places that have done this type of work. So we decided to look both private and public sectors, corporation, of course, academia. Then we spent some time, set some criteria, not just going by the organization's ratings, like best places to work for diversity of schools. Not that, like we really dug deep. And eventually, when we did choose three companies, five schools and school districts and one university. When we were done choosing that, we analyzed, we put in a lot of time analyzing what's working and what's not working. And if it's working, how are they making it achievable? And how authentic, what's the authenticity, like how committed are they? All that does, like what we can steal and from them and what can we take, the things we can take and make it better. Things like that, a lot of analyzing and research done. Now it's all like put in a summary document, concise yet comprehensive. With our statements, for an example, it's if I pick, if I'm joining a corporate or if I'm doing a Wesley School District, I will, the first column has the diversity statement itself. The second column, I would put like the reason behind choosing that particular place, leaving the third column for the other two members to annotate. Give their minds feedback. So it's all there now. Along with, we also have blotted with the words and the phrases, what we think would make it a strong one, yet feasible. We can make it. We can practice, just not having it in the books or websites. We, you know, can live, practice and go and go by that. So it's all there. It's more than the legwork is done, just they're the final person to just put it together. So this is the snapshot of the work on the diversity statement. Any questions? I'm happy to take. Otherwise, thank you all for your time and interest on this.
Thank you, Kumus. Next, Julie Jenks is joining us tonight.
Good evening, all. I'm happy to join you. I'm actually a Southboro resident and a seventh and eighth grade social studies teacher at Trotiere. So I have a huge investment in this community. All of my kids have gone through the system. And in fact, when my daughter graduates next year from Algonquin, we will all be, my husband, myself, all my kids will be Algonquin grads. So you can imagine my excitement at being invited to join the Equity Coalition. This is something near and dear to me. And I was able to join the Curriculum and Instruction Resources Committee, kind of subcommittee of that group. We were led by Rhoda Webb. Thank you, Rhoda. We had student voice on the committee, which is always exciting, Sarah Said and Grace Nyberg, who have now graduated, but made a commitment to come and help us out. Then we had community and school personnel join us as well, Joy Head, Mary Ellen Remillard, Clayton Ryan and Deirdre Writing. So we spent the year generating a list of resources that would support the educators in our system. Our objective was really to be able to help educators to create window and mirror opportunities. Mirror opportunities being those instances when students kind of see themselves in the curriculum and the resources that they encounter. And the window opportunities being times when they're looking into a world, a view, a resource that is very different from their own. And we really honestly believe that both of those are incredibly important, the development of our students. So when we were looking at resources, that was very much on our minds. We also wanted to make sure that we were addressing the wide range of students that we do see in the school system. Plus, we wanted to make sure that we were aligning any resources that we selected with the curriculum because the various disciplines all have curriculums that they are kind of charged with teaching to our students. But our overall mission was really to create opportunities to embrace the differences and also at the same time to celebrate the individuality of all of the students that come through our system that we're so blessed to have in front of us. So in generating that list, we realized that kind of, there's a lot of resources. We could get lost. In fact, I had a blast getting lost and really exploring deeply all the resources that are out there. We realized too, that there were a lot of people who have done significant work on this already. So we quickly kind of tapped into some of those lists that had already been generated and vetted. And then as a committee, a subcommittee, we really spent time reviewing and commenting on those lists and those resources so that we could start to organize them and categorize them by school level. Whether they were, you know, some of the resources we found were for educators, but there was others that were for administration or maybe even the community. But it was really fun kind of getting into those materials and again, really trying to support the educators in our district. So I enjoyed the work. And again, I'm happy to take any questions if any of you have any.
Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome.
Stephanie?
Thank you, Rhoda. So the third subgroup of the subgroup for curriculum instruction took a look at the tools and rubrics. We were wanting to consider existing tools and rubrics that can help educators evaluate curriculum assessment, curriculum materials, and even instruction for bias and just in terms of culturally responsive pedagogy. Much like the resources, you know, we realized very quickly, there's a lot out there. And took a very similar approach to the resources group where we organized and said, what are the existing tools and rubrics? And then sorted them. It turned out that there were tools for a few different categories. There were tools we found that were really for reviewing curriculum resources such as like textbooks or you know, sort of published materials. There were other tools that were more for inventorying literature, like maybe a classroom library or the books that you're using in a syllabus. There were some that were for analyzing a unit of study and some that were focused on analyzing instructional practices. And then the last sort of category of tools that we found were sets of standards that were really on this topic. Standards for social justice or for teaching tolerance. So we did a very similar approach to the resources group. We have a summary document where we have the tools that we found most valuable and then our sort of annotation and commentary. And in one case, in the case of curriculum resources, we created a adaptation, taking what we thought was the best from a few tools so that there's a version that we can try out and experiment with. So a lot was accomplished and I forgot to mention that in this group, Kamali and Kumus, who served with diversity statement and with this group. And then Kim Spiliakos and Emily Philbin, who are both teachers, and Lauren Bailey Jones and Marie Allen were all participating in this group. So big thank you to all of those members who contributed.
Thank you, Stephanie. So as we mentioned before, the work continues into next year. And what we're looking at is we'll keep fostering the partnerships with our town groups. That is including the Northboro Diversity Equity and Inclusion Group and the Neighbors for Peace in Southboro. We'll be adding more students and community members to the group. There are members who are not able to continue the work next year. And we will also, members of the coalition will be participating in the district equity audit that will be taking place next, starting in June, but the focus really is in starting on the fall of next year, next school year, I should say. So thank you for the opportunity to share with you this evening and we're excited as we move into the next year.
Well, thank you. Are there any questions from any of the comments from any of the committee members? Kamali and then Jen.
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone for that really thorough presentation. I think that is great that when any of the community members want to look back on this this meeting tonight, they'll be able to reference that presentation and see all the work that's been done. I think it was Julie that gave a part of the presentation on the curriculum updates. And there was a comment where you mentioned that, you know, we put together lists that even the teachers can reference or the community members, especially on the behalf of the teachers, is that, I want to know, I think it would be great for them to have access to that over the summer as they begin to plan their approach to their lesson planning for this coming year. So I'm wondering if that has been, is there a plan to email that out or have a wrap-up session to share that with them?
I know that during professional development, a lot of groups got, a lot of teachers devoted a lot of time to looking at some resources. But Rhoda may be able to speak to the rollout as the leader of that subgroup when we were going to do that. I know it's an ongoing process, but Rhoda, do you know in terms of when it would be shareable to faculty?
So regarding the sharing, what we were doing, well, with Stephanie, we were talking about creating a shared folder, something that staff can access, the work that has been done by the coalition.
I think there's, yeah, Rhoda and I have talked about this some and it's partly about access and it's partly about just finishing up. Like right now, there's still the summary documents. It's sort of like individual people's comments about them. And so we might need sort of like one more step of kind of polishing things up and then figuring out the best way for people to have access. So we have been discussing that and it's the same with some of the other curriculum materials. It's like we've got that next step to take as well.
That sounds great. And I would also offer that maybe if someone is willing to just kind of, if it's allowed, offer maybe an optional Zoom where someone that can really share the enthusiasm of, like, let me tell you what we put together for you here, right? It's parceled out so readable and easy to use that will kind of get the excitement going so that they can continue to follow through on that throughout the course of the summer. I think just, you know, having the folder and nice weather, you're not going to access the folder. But you might join a Zoom to kind of hear that passionate talk. So I would like to kind of recommend something like that.
Molly, we could have had air conditioning and the folder. I think we would have had a lot of people looking at that folder in our schools.
Right, right.
I just want to, I just want to add, Kamali, I think that a lot of the teachers who were involved and through a lot of the PD that Rhoda has helped to organize this year, the pieces of this work are already sort of out and infiltrating conversations. That's probably the wrong word, but like it's, the tentacles are out. And you know, there are a few summer PD options that relate to this topic where there are teachers who have gotten excited about this work from the PD and then said, can I sponsor a group that's going to take that curriculum unit analysis we did and go deeper? So it's, there's a lot of momentum that I think we're going to be able to build on. And some of it is also, teachers are very ready for a break after the year that they've had. And then I think there are a lot of them that are going to be ready to jump back in. And so we're going to need to have things ready and available as they refresh themselves and are ready to dive in.
All right, great. Thank you. If I think of any more questions, I'll raise my hand.
Me?
I see Jen, sorry, I was muted.
I just had, I had a question about the assessment and evaluation of some of the work that we're going to be doing. And I know you talked about tools. Will there be like creation of benchmarks by which we can evaluate those, using those tools? And also, I think the second part to that question is, will there be some way to get student feedback, not just students who are potentially members of this committee or task force, but to, you know, get a sense from students, do you feel like you're represented in the curriculum? Do you feel like you're learning, you know, even questions across the various grade levels? And I'm thinking about that particularly because of the article that the two women wrote about their own experience and whether or not we can tap into those kinds of experiences before people, you know, before people graduate and make those changes.
Speaking from my own perspective, I love the idea. That's definitely going on my end of year survey. Now that you say that, thank you for my students. I know that I teach eighth grade and students this year for the first time are creating civics action projects. And a lot of them are centered on this topic. So it is exciting as we're talking about it to recognize that there is a lot of interest that's happening. And a lot of people are paying attention to creating culturally responsive classrooms. But yes, the more we can tap into student voice and the more we can use data to kind of support what's happening, the better we are. So I agree very much. Thank you.
So Jen, I'll just add a couple of points. And the first is, So Jen, I'll just add a couple of points. And the first is, we are partnering with Mass Insights. They will be doing equity audit. Part of the, one of the goals is really to hear all the voices and all the stakeholders, so current students, community members, current faculty and staff and alumni, and really to help us set those baseline benchmarks to kind of move, you know, measure progress against. We're also looking at creating survey tools so that we systematically and routinely survey students so that we can measure progress over time. We currently are looking at Panorama. It's actually a a survey tool that has a lot of psychometric work behind it and that's one tool we're looking at. And we're also using the Metro West at Austin Health Survey Data to help us create those benchmarks and actually measure progress over time. So it is work we're looking at.
Okay, I see Kim.
I just wanted to sort of piggyback on what Stephanie said in answer to Kamali and that is this work is so beautifully presented in already in the summer reading portrayal here. So it it so parents and students, I believe, or maybe I just read my students, but not only was it like great resources of like what the books are going to be, but it also presented this idea of windows and mirrors, which I thought was just fantastic because the more that we can sort of share what is, you know, going on in the classroom and what the teachers are learning with the community so that we can sort of back it up at home. I just think it's great. So it's what Stephanie said about it's already happening, it's happening. Loved it.
Other comments, questions? All right, well, that was a very nice way to to actually finish that part of our agenda. Greg, I think we're moving into your report to the committee.
Yeah, just Roger, if it's the will of the committee to have our principals sign off for the evening. I don't think there's anything on the agenda moving forward that would require their participation.
Well, I'm looking for objections and I see none. I wonder if we'll ever get to the point where the school committee can be excused and the principals can stay and listen to your report, Greg. Probably not, right? All right.
All right. So so thank you. So before I begin my superintendent's report to the committee, by the time the agenda was created, I did want to add one new piece of information on my report, and that is around the Accelerated Learning Academy grants that became available through the state. Stephanie has been working on that and she's going to provide a an overview of what families can expect.
Sure. Thank you, Greg. And many people have heard in the news in recent months, talk, whether it's from Governor Baker or the Commissioner of Education, about summer acceleration academies. And so there's been a lot of talk, but it was just, it was a little bit about the talk, what we were saying on the committee earlier about the fluid nature of the information, I think Mary Ellen was talking about. So it was really just in the last two weeks that we've actually gotten specific information. And they have rolled out a grant for summer acceleration academies that entitles districts to, you know, specific amounts based on the size of the districts to try to target about 10% of students in very specific grade levels. And the grant is highly specified, meaning that they have defined what they mean by a summer acceleration academy, which grade levels. So in the early grades, it is for literacy and then in the upper elementary for math and in one middle school grade for math. And it's a one week academic experience that also includes a little bit of some sort of a extracurricular, you know, special or or some other activity. So we've just gotten all of this information. We are hard at work making sense of, you know, what does this look like for us? And there's, there will be lots more information to come. So we're aiming to try to put something together for a week in August and there will be lots more information to come. I'm happy to answer questions if there are any questions.
Kim, I think your hand is still up from before.
No, I put it down and put it right back up. Sorry. I just have a quick question. The 10% of the students that they are, they want you to target, are they, is it pandemic related, like struggling because of the pandemic or what is it?
So it is, you know, it's for accelerating learning and they have said globally that that it is for potentially COVID-related struggles. However, the stipulations of the grant really are about just defining criteria. They use the 10% as the way they calculated the money to say, like, they looked at our enroll. So really where the 10% comes in is they looked at districts enrollments in those grade levels and said, if you were to target 10%, this is how many students it would be and this is how we calculate the money. For us, we're really looking at, we, you know, have to figure out how to as everybody would benefit from a summer academic experience. What is a set of students that we can provide a summer learning experience that might accelerate their learning is really what this grant is trying to do.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah. So Stephanie, the only thing that I would add is, and you made it clear, but I think it's important to reiterate, and that is, this is an entitlement grant, which means if we write the grant, we get the money. So it's not competitive, we're not competing. So that is kind of the shift in some of of our information about the grant. And again, the grants just were released. And as we write these grants, we will get the money and we'll be able to run the program. So which is nice. It's it's predictable.
That's great.
That's great. Yeah, I agree.
That is great. Well, thanks, Stephanie. Other comments or questions on this? Okay.
Continue on the superintendent's report and next in your packet is the enrollment report as of June 4th, 21. And we've maintained very steady enrollment over the course of this year.
Greg, could I just, could I just, you did say that that you would ask if there were any objections to some folks leaving the meeting. So don't feel you have to stay, folks. There were no objections.
Thank you.
Run away. Have a great summer.
I thought they had already left, Roger.
Well, you know, hanging on every word. Well, I didn't want to think that that people were so interested in your report that they were staying for that, but maybe that is true. That could very well be true. All right. So I don't want to, I don't want to rule that out.
I know far better, Roger. All right. Have a good night, principals. See you tomorrow.
Good night, everyone.
So enrollment has maintained very steady. As we look to the 21, 22 enrollment, we are well within our class size policy in terms of class sizes pre-K through H, which is great news. And we will be monitoring enrollment very closely over the summer. I would would share that it is probably a bit of a unique summer in terms of enrollment and we're just, we'll, we'll watch it week to week and and keep the school committee apprised of any drastic changes, but there is some capacity right now at each of the grade levels and we'll continue to monitor it over the summer. Next in the superintendent's report, I will turn it over to Becky to give the FY 21 Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report as well as the COVID-19 related unanticipated expenditures.
Good evening, everyone. It's really unbelievable to think that there's less than one month remaining in fiscal year 2021. The finance team has been busy working with schools and with the departments to close out our fiscal year. And as you can see, as of May 31st, 2021, we had $386,978 or 1.82% remaining on the bottom line. Last year at this time, we had $415,264 $264 or 1.99% remaining. Overall, I'm pleased at where we stand at this point in the fiscal year. You will know on the report that some of the educator salary line items have slight increases from last month's report and that change is a result of our memorandum of agreement with the Southborough Foundation. I'm also continuing to work with Southborough Town Accountant Carla McAuliffe to move additional expenses from our operational budget onto the Town's Cares Act and also to submit expenses to FEMA. Those expenses total in the neighborhood of $62,000. And then finally, I would like to recognize Pam Height. She is the Southborough Financial Coordinator for her work this year. Pam has been with the district for many years and I'm sure that she would say that this past year has been like no other, but she has really been able to navigate all of the changes and all of the fluctuations throughout the year. So I want to thank her. And if there are any questions on the monthly general fund?
All right. I see no questions. So I would entertain a motion to approve until audited the Southborough Public School District Fiscal Year 2021 Budget Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report as of May 31st, 2021. Do I hear a so moved?
So moved.
So moved by Kamali. Is there a second?
It's Kim. It's a second.
Seconded by Kim. Any questions? Roll call vote. Kamali?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Katura?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so it's unanimous.
Okay. So next I will give an overview of the COVID-19 financial impact. And as Mary Ellen and Greg both said, hopefully this will be the last report that I will need to provide on this topic. Just one quick item on the grant funds. You will notice there is a new entry on the potential grant funds that we will be receiving and that is the S R three allocation and that amount is $281,266. Those funds we will be eligible to apply for by the end of October of this year and those can be used through the end of fiscal year 24. So that is one more allocation of funding that has come from the federal government for schools. In terms of our expenses, there really have not been any substantial changes from last month's report. As you can see, the areas really that are driving it are staffing and that's the teacher substitutes and the additional staff that were brought on as a result of the SARP program, our nurse substitutes. And then the other area really is the cleaning, the outside cleaning personnel, and then also the facility cleaning supplies. Those are the areas that we really saw a lot of impact to our budget. Technology, we were not too far off in our projection, but that wasn't overage. And thankfully, with the allocation of these grants, we have been able to absorb all of the new technology that has been required this year. Our preschool revolving account, there has been a slight change in our projection in terms of what the loss that we were looking at. So now we are looking at a $10,498 loss for this fiscal year, which would normally be absorbed by both communities. However, as I've said, we did begin the fiscal year with a balance of $98,000 in that account, so we will be able to absorb that loss. In terms of where we stand with our tuition and our expenses, you can see the report that was shared with you. We had, as of May 31st, received 90% of our tuitions and we still had $29,000 remaining. I'm pleased to report that as of today, Caroline Willard in our office has done a fabulous job at collecting the tuitions and we are down to about $3,900 remaining in tuitions. And our expenses are exactly where we expect them to be with only one month left with 90% already being paid out.
That's very impressive.
Yes, she's she's done a great job. And then lastly, the food service report that was included in your packet, you actually saw that we were not in a deficit that we were, I think, to the good $4,000. There were some expenses that had not hit when I had submitted this report. And so you can see that as of May 31st, we actually were in a slight deficit of $7,033 for our food service program. We have seen our numbers increase. However, with the cost of the meal preparation, we have seen some additional expenses. And so we do have money set aside in our operational budget. Currently, we have $60,000 in our operational budget. I do not anticipate needing all of that money to cover any shortfall. We are probably expecting about an $11,000 deficit in our food service Southborough operation. And if there are any questions on COVID-19, I'm happy to take those.
My hand is up, but Roger probably can't see it because we're.
Oh, you know what? I was actually looking at the attendees. So yes, I see you and then followed by Kim. Sorry.
Okay, no, that's fine. So thank you for this, as always. I'm just curious. So the grant, total grant funds, it is about $766,000. And then in the expenses chart, it looks like we've allocated or spent $259,000 toward these various items where we still have sort of a red bracketed difference for a total of 145. So are we going to, are we applying more of the grant funds to that? And I guess I'm also wondering how much will be left and, you know, of these funds that we can use through fiscal year 24 and is it, what is it limited to, what we can spend it on? Is it a pretty broad, because COVID is knock on wood, you know, sort of hopefully going to be in the past. And so what can we still spend the money on if we haven't spent it already?
Sure. So we have already expended the top three grants on that spreadsheet. That would be the State Coronavirus Prevention Fund, the CVRF School Reopening, and then the Remote Learning Technologies Essential Grant. Those funds have already been expended. Where you see those bracketed items, we have been able to either from using grant funds or from working with the town and utilizing their CARES Act money, or there were savings in other operational areas in our budget where we were able to make up those shortfalls. So we, you know, have been able to absorb those costs without a major impact to to our budget. As far as the S R funds, we have budgeted the first allocation of S R funds, which was about $35,000. We are planning to utilize that in our FY 22 budget. When we had applied for that, it was, we had applied for technology resources. And then the S R two and the S R three, we are actually in the process of applying for both of those funds. There are certain stipulations. For example, S R two, $10,000 of that specifically has to be allocated for student mental health services. However, the district determines the best fit is for that. And then the S R three, and Greg, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's 20% that has to be allocated for student assessment and also loss of learning. So there are certain stipulations, but they have expanded it where we can also use it for facility type items, you know, for for HVAC systems. Our funds are are smaller than some other districts have received because it is based on our Title I allocation. And so some districts have seen, I'd say, more substantial figures. So it may be more beneficial to them in terms of HVAC, but I think that we will be able to. I know Stephanie has a list of areas where she could definitely utilize these monies.
So I'll just speak a little bit to our strategy. So although we will put together a plan and apply for the grant. So although we will put together a plan and apply for the grant money, our thinking is that we'll move through the budget process for FY 23. And then December, early January, we'll have a sense of where we are in fiscal year 23 to see if there are any, you know, economic downturns or areas we really need to shore up. And our S R funds will be a source of, of being able to do some of that. And we have through, for S R three, I know it's through 24, Becky, and S R, S R two, I believe it's through 23.
Correct.
So we're trying to be strategic around how we use this money.
I think you, that's very helpful.
And you answered a lot of my questions already, but specifically about the S R three, is that the one that has social emotional learning, like a set aside amount?
Yes.
Okay. And then do you have plans for that yet, or are you still?
No, we, we do have plans for that. So obviously, I think a percent of, the percent of the grant is required for social emotional support of our students. So we are looking at, you know, working with Murray and identifying strategies to be able to support our students. We don't know exactly what that will look like in the fall, but it is something we are having conversations around.
Do you know any, I've read some discussion about, like, sort of working with the community. And what I'm not clear about is if it's DESI, like previous to like the announcement of the S R funds, if they worked with, you know, parents, the community, basically, or if each district is sort of required to, you know, open discussion or whatever.
So I think it, it's dependent on each community to determine, you know, what it will use its, its percent of funding to support social emotional learning needs. You know, so I think it's district dependent. But we will be looking, you know, obviously, you know, Southborough Youth and Family, you know, we're working with our partners. We also have, you know, we're bringing on an SCL coordinator pre K through 12. So we have a lot of potential ideas moving forward. Stephanie?
And yeah, I'll just add that, you know, earlier Greg mentioned some surveys that we were looking at in relation to equity. But those survey tools from Panorama are also, there's, there's big overlaps between the social emotional learning and the culturally responsive teaching. And so some of the same tools will, that we're considering, will give us baseline data around social emotional learning and help us make decisions in this area. So that's, that's like one of the first places we're kind of looking is let's get, let's get some good data and a really strong understanding of where the needs are. And, and there's a lot that we already know, but I just wanted to connect those dots.
That's great. Awesome. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Katura? No. Okay. What's next? Okay, back to you, Greg.
So that concludes my superintendent's report to the committee.
All right. Educational policy. Doesn't look like we have any at this time. And I don't think we have any policy development in our distribution at this time, personnel items.
So in your packet is the personnel report as of June 9th, 2021. And since we began the meeting recognizing our retirees, I think we are in a good place with our personnel report this evening.
All right. No communications at this time. We have action on minutes.
And Roger?
I'm sorry?
And Roger, before we take action on the minutes, can I just acknowledge Cheryl Lepre? So Cheryl Lepre, I know the school committee members have met her and have interacted with her, but she, she's executive administrative assistant. She supports the superintendent's office, so she's responsible for keeping up and keeping track of all the minutes throughout the year. And this year has been, I think, a record. Cheryl also helps organize the school committee agendas each month and make sure that all of the packets are prepared and ready for the school committee members. So I just want to acknowledge her outstanding work. And any superintendent would be so thrilled to have her as, as the person who is organizing and orchestrating a lot of the, the work that happens in the central office. So just want to acknowledge Cheryl.
And I would, I'd like to pile on to that, Greg. You know, certainly, you know, in my journey as chair, I work a lot with Cheryl. And how, how can I say this? I don't think there's any amount of appreciation that can accurately reflect how much I appreciate Cheryl and the work she does. And it's, you know, I just, I, I need to go to some sort of vocabulary school to come up with the right words. But she has been so helpful, you know, in getting through this year. That I, I really appreciate the efforts. All right.
Wait, Roger, before you go, Jen, did you have something?
I'm sorry. I missed it.
Yeah, I just want a quick question. I don't know if we had mentioned at the last meeting that we would have get an update on the RFP for extended day. I don't know if we're just not ready for that yet or what the status on that, if I can get an update, that would be helpful.
Yeah, so it's, although it's not on the agenda, we can provide a quick update, Jen. So we have gone out to bid. We have, we are going through the procurement process for extended day programs in Southborough. That has been led by Becky Palgrino, who is, she's been trained as the chief procurement officer at the regional level. So she's had a lot of training. It's a little bit different because it's a pre K through eight school district in Southborough. We are the process of evaluating proposals that we've received and going through the process. And we are hoping to wrap up that process sometime next week and make a decision. So that, that news will be shared shortly with the community. I know many people are anxious about what, what the process will yield.
Can I just, as a follow up to that, when that information is released, will the community and also as, will we know, will we have a sense of what went into making that, what the criteria was used to select those?
Yeah, so we're going to draft an explanation of the process. So people have a sense of, you know, what, what is the required process and how do we make the decision? What criteria was used? So yes, that, that will be part of the communication to the community when a decision is made.
Thank you.
Kamali?
I just wanted to echo the sentiments earlier about Cheryl. I know she's not on the call, but when she does hear or see this, I think that, this was my first year being a part of the committee, and I peppered her with a lot of questions, especially in the beginning, and she's been nothing but helpful along the way. And then I just want to add that the quality of the work and organizing that she provides to support this both South and North Borough districts is like top notch. Any project manager, program manager in any business would be happy to have her. I know that I, working in that sector, like the work that she puts together is, would be a dream to help finish some of the projects that we need to. So Greg, you really have a real gem on your hands. And I hope that she, you know, hears this and knows just how much we appreciate what she's doing and that it really does help make this whole, you know, process run smoother.
I'll just add, Kamali, I'm the fifth superintendent. She is trained, so.
All right. So we have an, we have some action on minutes. And the minutes are in your packet. If anyone has any corrections that they know about, please put your hand up now. But I'm going to try to do this with one vote. So I would entertain a motion to approve. Now, I'd like a so moved on this. I'd entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the following. Southborough School Committee Special Open Meeting of May 22nd, 2021. Southborough School Committee Open Meeting Minutes of May 12th, 2021. Southborough School Policy Development Subcommittee Meeting Minutes of January 19th, 2021. The Joint Capital Planning Subcommittee and Town of Southborough Capital Planning/School Research Subcommittee Meeting Minutes of May 17th, 2021. The Southborough School Operational Budget Subcommittee Meeting Minutes of November 30th, 2021. And also for them, the meeting minutes of Ju, January 7th, 2021. And also for them, the meeting minutes for February 4th, 2021. Do I hear a so moved?
So moved.
So moved by Katura. Do I hear a second?
This is Kamali, second.
Second. I remind folks, you do not have to have attended a meeting to vote to approve its minutes. So I'll take a roll call vote. Kamali?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Katura?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that's unanimous. I see Bill Perils. Agenda items for the next meeting. Anything to discuss at this point, folks? Greg or anyone else?
The, the one thing I will share is, you know, our principals have been working on their school improvement plans. So that is an upcoming agenda topic for either early September or the first meeting in October. And then just a, a school, a school reopening update, I think, will obviously would be important. And the start time update would be important as we look at the September agenda.
Greg, this is Kamali. Do, do you think any of the principals would have done what we talked about earlier, like that end of year survey? Maybe it's something that just teachers do one by one or that they could say, oh, give a consensus back about some of the teacher, the student feedback from their end of year.
Let me, Kamali, let me have a conversation with the principals to see what they think is feasible. And, and if it is feasible, we'll definitely, we can add that.
Okay. I see in the audience Selectman Stivers and Timothy Lit. And next we have audience sharing. Tim, before, before I call on you, I have some audience sharing, which I would like to, which I would like to share. I mentioned earlier, well, one of the agenda items earlier tonight was the Municipal Technology Committee reappointing William Warren and also the ex officio appointment of Maurice Myrie. And I happened to mention that I was involved with some of the initial work in getting that committee formed. But Selectman Stivers and Tim Lit were also involved. And Tim probably the most. And I think that as I see how this committee has, has developed and played a greater and greater role, and I anticipate they're going to play an even greater role in moving forward in technology for Southborough. I, I actually believe that if Tim had not been involved and done the work that he did, the committee would have never been created. So I just want to give a little shout out to him in this audience sharing period. So Tim, I see your hand up.
Greetings.
You're on.
Thanks. I didn't expect that. It was a lot of work by a lot of people to, to make it happen. And it takes continuing adult supervision, as I like to put it. So a little earlier, Superintendent Martino mentioned that you were looking for marketing expertise to help with your communications. And I thought I'd share that I had a similar, although somewhat more complicated challenge in terms of finding technologists in the town of Southborough. And in the course of solving that problem, I found it was possible to use town census data with an awful lot of processing to figure out, you know, who was a technologist and, or who might be a technologist. So out of that comes a spreadsheet that has all of the town residents listed with occupations and addresses. If that would be helpful to you in terms of finding, marketing people, I'd be happy to share it with you. I will warn you, though, that people are very creative in describing their occupations. So, you know, we have Queen of the World, and, you know, we have marketing spelled 17 different ways. But nonetheless, it is possible to dig through it and, and find people. And it's a lot easier in spreadsheet form than asking the town clerk or, you know, sending an email, can you please help me? So if that would be helpful, just drop me a note and I'll be happy to, to send you a pointer to that. And then the second thing, if you'd be so kind as to alert Mr. Myrie that I will be chasing him with a orientation for new members to the M T C talk. I'd like to get that in so that he doesn't walk in cold.
Greg, what, what Tim means when he says alert, he means warn. Okay, but.
Yes, that's what I mean.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in audience sharing? All right. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. It is 9:22. Is there such a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn. 9:22.
Moved by Kamali. Is there a second?
It's Kim, second.
Seconded by Kim. It is 9:22. Roll call vote. Katura?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
I vote yes. Unanimous. We are adjourned, and thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.